I'm gonna call and order the city of council meeting, city council meeting for the city of Rainbow City for Monday, February 24th. And I'm gonna ask Jeff Prince to lead us in an invocation to be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Would you stand?
If you would pray with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, Lord. We thank you for your many mercies that you give us each and every day. We thank you for the place that we get to call home, Rainbow City. Lord, I just ask that you be with us tonight and all those that are here. And continue to bless us, Lord, and help us to make the best decisions for the city that we can possibly make. First, in Christ's name, we pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you turn your cell phones to off or vibrate position, we'd appreciate it. And I'll ask the clerk if she'll take a roll call.
Anita Bedwell, Randy Weiss, Jeff Prince, Jamison Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Here. Number five has approved the minutes of the regular meeting of February 10th of 2025, and I'd entertain a motion that we do so. Is there any discussion? Those in favor, by saying aye. Any opposed? Number six is personnel changes, and that's to accept the resignation of Michael Klein from the Recreation Department effective Thursday, February 13th. To accept the resignation of Tony Williams, police officer, effective Thursday, March 6th. To promote Vinnie Dupree and James Martin from firefighter, paramedic to lieutenant, paramedic, effective Friday, February 28th of 2025. To hire Michael Thomas as an uncertified police officer, effective Friday, March 7th. And to hire Benjamin Sanders as an uncertified police officer, effective Friday, February 28th. And I'd entertain a motion that we do all of these personnel changes as a package. Is there any discussion? Those in favor, by saying aye. Any opposed? Congratulations to the one. Now, I will speak on the resignation of Tony Williams. He came and spoke to me. Tony's got an opportunity, business opportunity coming up for him, and he's gonna take advantage of that and puts him back closer to home. Tony's from Chattanooga, and he just wanted to especially extend a thankful, just a thankful word to the city council and to the other associates, not only of the police department, but all the other departments as well. And we're gonna miss Tony, and he'll be hard to replace. As for the promotion of Vinnie Dupree and James Martin from paramedic to firefighter to lieutenant, they're both, well, Vinnie got a call, didn't he? James, do you wanna come and speak for them? For the two of you? If you don't mind? You have to come up here. If you just start out with your name and address for the official record.
James Martin, been here, March 1st will be 16 years. Just wanna say thank you on behalf of Vinnie and myself. We both look forward to this opportunity. Chief McKees made some changes, and we're gonna have some, a little more responsibility, and we both look forward to it.
That's good.
Thank you.
Hey, we appreciate you. Thank you so much. You knew you weren't gonna get by with it, didn't you? No, we do appreciate both Vinnie and James. They do a really, really good job in our fire department. I think I'll go ahead and take an opportunity to boast on them a little bit. I don't know if the chief or chief, did you wanna speak? Okay, you're good. But just to take an opportunity to boast on our fire department. We have the number one individually certified fire department in the state of Alabama. This is about the third or fourth year now, chief, fourth year running. And that's a tribute, not only to the chief and the leadership that we have in the fire department, but it says way more about that individual, that they're willing to go out and expend that time and that energy to go out and become very, very qualified in their occupation and profession. And we appreciate you guys. You know that already. You know that I'm on your side, and it's exciting to have a fire department under our care. And that's the way we see it. It's our job to support you guys and give you a better opportunity to be successful. Michael Thomas, is Michael here? Michael, you wanna come up and talk to us just a minute, or you just wanna, you wanna give it a minute? Now, we can make it rough on you. Thank you. We appreciate you. You're gonna be a part of the best police department, we believe, in the state of Alabama. And there's no doubt that their hard work shows up in the fact that this is the safest city and state of Alabama for four years running. Now, you can say there's a common thread to that four years, that would be up here, but maybe not. Maybe it just goes back to the fact that we've got leadership and members of these departments that go out and do their best every single day to not only protect this community, but to stay up on the advanced, not only technology, but just in the sense of their emergency medical skills. And our police department is, bar none, the best police department that I know. They're well-equipped, and you guys are very, very lucky. Is Mr. Sanders here? How you dress for success today. I appreciate that. Would you like to come up and speak? We'd like to hear from you. Just give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Benjamin Sanders, and I would like to thank you all for the opportunity to serve the city and protect its people.
We're excited for you, man. I promise you that. You're an army guy, both of you guys, former military. Is that right? We're excited. I'd like to see some army guys come in here. Yeah, we made high on the test. It should show, you know? That's for all the Marines and Air Force guys that we have, but we appreciate it. We're glad to have you on. And you'll hear more of that from this council as we go on through the night. We're glad you're here. So do you go by Benjamin or Ben? Okay. Let's go Ben. We'll nickname you later. Number seven is to reappoint Randy Weiss to the Etowah County Mega Sports Complex Authority. His term expired November the 10th of 2024. We've been in a very, very precarious situation off and on with the sports authority. It has settled in and doing incredible things now, and Randy's been gracious enough to say that he could stay on for another little while, and we appreciate that from Mr. Weiss. And his new term would run out in November 10th of 2026, and I would entertain a motion that we reappoint Mr. Weiss to that position. Is there any discussion? Those in favor, by saying aye. Any opposed? Well, you don't even vote for yourself. Number eight is retail beer, 050, off premises only, and 070, retail table wine, off premises only. License for Express Mart 50, located at 3500 Rainbow Drive. The new owner is Ahmed GH LLC. And we have someone here, would you like to come and speak about the? Hey, I like it, man. Everybody's in the mood to talk tonight.
How you doing, everybody? I'm Adam. I own the Texico here down the road. It used to be Shell. We turned it to Texico. So we've been here for like two, three years, and we'll deal with a lot, the cops and everybody. And we'll thank you for your business, and thank you so much.
Thank you. We appreciate you. Yeah, you're a big part of our, being able to fuel our vehicles. We use all of our stations here, and the Shell Mart, now Texico, was a big part of that. We appreciate you being here. Is there a motion to pass the retail beer, off premises wine and beer? Is there any discussion? Those in favor, by saying aye. Any opposed? Number nine is to authorize Mayor Taylor to sign a beverage agreement with Coca-Cola Bottling Company United Central LLC, effective for a period of three years through January 23rd of 2028, and can be extended for additional two years if we so choose. And I'd entertain a motion that you give me that authorization. Is there any discussion? Those in favor, by saying aye. Any opposed? Number 10 is to purchase a Kubota RTV X1100 for the Vivian Lee Maddox Sports Complex Recreation Department from Alabama Tractor for $21,816.22. This is a Sourcewell buying cooperative product contract number 112624 KBA. And this is already budgeted money, so we're just bringing it to the council just to make them aware of that. And I'd entertain a motion that we make that purchase. Is there any discussion? Those in favor, by saying aye. Any opposed? Number 11 is resolution number 25-05, and it's amended rules for recreation department rental reimbursement. You've all had a copy of that. We're able to have some feedback on it, and I think we've come to a solution on it. Is there anybody that has any questions or any comment on it before we vote? Is there a motion to pass the resolution 25-05? Is there any discussion? Those in favor, by saying aye. Any opposed? Number 12 is ordinance number 600. This is a public hearing to rezon of lots 21 and 22, located at 3525 Greenview Avenue, PPIN shown, from Highway Commercial to Manufacturing District 1. Scott Skipper petitioned the planning commission on behalf of the property owner, David Cummins, on December 17th, 2024, to add two office buildings to the front of the property with the back lots being used for storage buildings. And this is a time and place for anyone that'd like to speak for or against this ordinance. Is there anyone that'd like to, will do the against first? Anyone that'd like to speak against? Okay, if you would, come up here. Just give us your name and address for the official record.
Robert Handy, 3517 Greenview Avenue, right next. How you doing, Joe?
Hey, Robert.
Been a few years.
It has.
All right. From what I've heard, that he's wanting to rezon it for manufacturing. Don't sound, you know, it's already fixed where he can have his storage buildings, and he can have his office buildings. Why would he want to rezon for manufacturing if he wasn't gonna re-manufacture?
Let me answer to that. We created that, and I'll tell you why. What we did is we took storage buildings, which we were inundated with storage buildings. We had a lot of them on the road front. And what we did is we required for those to go to that second level, that second tier. So they had to be not on the road front. And that was something that we did. We went to our planning and our zoning people and our board of adjustments and asked for them to change that so that, so that we would stop having commercial road frontage, commercial highway property being used for storage facility and storage buildings. As far as it go into a manufactured, manufacturing type of situation, it's a case-by-case basis, which allows us to be able to send that to our planning, and Mr. Hopper might wanna speak to it. But it allows for us to be able to send it to them to make those decisions based on the usage at the time. Does that make sense?
No, it really don't. But, you know, what I'm, you know, really don't, you know, don't like the storage buildings, but it was commercial already. So, you know, it's kinda, but I really don't want it where you've got a lot of, you know, manufacturing. I've been around that my whole life. And you don't want it where it's just circulating, you know, from the ones coming out of the storage building now, when they turn out their lights, they sit there for like 10 minutes with their lights shining right in your window, and that's my TV room, you know?
I understand.
You've got lights shining in there for 10 to 30 minutes where the motor's running. And some of it's pretty loud, which I don't mind that, because, you know, my car's loud sometimes, so it's, but, you know, it's just, what I'm dealing with now with just the storage buildings, you know, when you throw the manufacturing part in there with it. You know, so, and I've talked to everybody on the street, and, you know, nobody, and when you mention manufacturing, nobody wants to have anything to do with it.
Yeah, we were real careful in trying to put it in the right place. And some of these guys may wanna chime in a little bit, but what we were trying to do was to be able to take, to take storage buildings off the road front and put them in a second-tier position or a back-level position. And that's the way that we did it. And so the requirement for Mr. Cummins was for him to go onto the front of it and put professional office buildings because he could. And, you know, so he had to put that highway commercial building in front, which was, I don't know if that's punitive or not. That would be up to him to discuss that. But that's that second tier or that back tier, for it, for him to be able to have usage of his property, we had to convert that so that it would go to M1, and that's just light manufacturing. And it's just been a, we only have certain types of zoning, and that was as close as we could get it to fit. And then us still have the ability to say yes or no, based on what his usage would be. And I'll allow him to speak to that when we go to the fore. I'm guessing that he's gonna speak for his project, so.
Yeah, that's basically it. You know, you've got the stock and lockets, and you've got the big ones right across the street, which I don't see why you would have to rezon it, because you've already got them right across the street. Same thing you're saying, he's gonna put back there, the large ones? I mean, I don't see the rezoning unless he's planning to come in there and do some manufacturing, which, you know, you're messing with the land, you're messing with the value of property right through there, you know?
I understand, but maybe I could help you a little bit here, too. The plans that we passed and that Mr. Hopper and his committee passed was plans that are for storage only. So they can't be converted or changed without him coming back to us and deciding that that's what he's going to try to do, in which case it would be a tough sell for us, because we wouldn't see it that way. Because the reason that we're allowing this change is so that he can dual-purpose his property, not to be able to go into a manufacturing position. Does that make sense?
No, what I'm looking at is, you know, you've got the exact same thing you're talking about set up right across the street now.
That's true.
All right. There's, I don't see why he would wanna change it unless he had the back of his mind.
He didn't wanna change it. We require him to change it. We require him to ask for a M1 on the back of that. He didn't come to ask us for that. We make them petition us, and, I mean, Clark, do you wanna speak to this? And what we do is we say to them, okay, you're going to have to come to us and explain what your usage is going to be. And he submitted a set of plans, all the runoff calculations, all of the things that we have to do for stormwater runoff, all of those things, and that has to satisfy that building committee, planning committee. And they were satisfied in the explanation and the engineering of this, that it would become a dual-purpose piece of property. But that second back purpose is not for manufacturing. It's just everything falls under about five, six, seven different zoning requirements. That's right. Is that right? And that's based on, really, the colors of that map will tell you what the zoning is. And across the street, it is that way, so that we could eliminate that. But now we have it to the point where that front usage has to be highway commercial, that back usage, if you're going to, because you gotta, you gotta understand, initially, he did, he had that piece of property. Had he built this one year ago, he could have built it and never, he could have put them all the way out to the front. And when we changed that rule, we did that to make it, excuse me, tougher for them to be able to bring storage facilities and storage buildings in and them make it all the way out to the road, because we felt like it wasn't a good look for our road frontage.
Definitely not a good look.
Right. So anyone else that, I think we've got a good discussion, so I'd rather keep it going.
Just to add to what he was saying, just to kind of say it in a different way, if this makes more sense. Prior to the changing of this ordinance, anything that was zoned highway commercial, which is basically all of our road frontage on 77, just take 77 as an example. Any of that property already zoned highway commercial would have been allowed to put storage buildings right up to the road. The only reason why we changed it to a requirement for M1 was so that those properties already zoned HC can't do that. So what he's telling you is, this doesn't mean there's gonna be manufacturing there. It just means that because of that changed ordinance, in order for him to put the storage buildings there, he has to petition the planning commission to be moved to M1.
Because he then has to tell us what that usage is going to be.
Okay, I guess where I'm getting at is, I've read up on what M1 is, and it's nothing good for a neighborhood. It's all negative.
Right.
You know, devalue your property, runoff, you know, you got a big ditch back there. And it actually spritzed my property from the part I got on Greenview to the part behind it. And there's, you know, a road that's could be foot through there, but there's a big runoff ditch that looks like a little creek when it comes to big weather, you know, rain. And, you know.
Well, and I think that's what I'm trying to say. I'm not saying it very well, obviously, but. It's fine. We're both from South Kansas, so we're struggling anyway. But, no, what I'm trying to say is, if, in the case of highway commercial, you can have a doctor's office on highway commercial. You can have a store, you can have retail and commercial, and then you could have storage buildings. Well, we felt like that was a failure to our road frontage, which is the most valuable property that a city could have. So then we found the closest zoning requirement that we could. But it still goes back to that, what you're asking us to zone it to, you have to bring us the product or the building that you're going to put on and what its usage is. So he doesn't get to take that piece of property and then convert it later after he's, you know, he came to tell us it's gonna be storage. It has to be storage. And for it to be changed in any way, he would have to come back and re-petition that same building committee, which goes by a very stringent set of rules. And they would have to see it the same way. It would come back to another public hearing, which would give you an opportunity to say no, or you don't agree with it or whatever. Does that make sense?
But yeah, the only thing I was looking at, I know M1, it sets it up where it could be, where he could bring it in, have a tool and die or a plastic.
It also, the ordinance also calls for it could be a broadcast studio. It could be a business or professional office, which is William built in front of, so it qualifies under M1. It also could be a business support service, a car wash, a commercial school. There's more than just an industry.
Yeah, yeah, so just because it says M1.
Don't let that through. You gotta read the whole ordinance and go through the whole thing.
Yeah, and we then have to approve that usage. So if it's not going to be something that we feel like was conducive already, which it was already conducive for it. We tried to make it a little tougher for them to be able to come out onto your road frontage and put storage buildings. Now you're gonna have, he has to have two very finished buildings out front, which, you know, quite honestly, we're telling him, this is what the requirement is now. Hadn't been long ago, he could have came in and built them from front to rear.
Do you like this guy out there now? Yeah, just.
That's right. That's right. Yeah.
All right. I see what you're saying. I still don't like it, because.
I understand.
But I mean, also, like a daycare falls under M1. So, I mean, that's not an industry, you know? So, I mean, there's a lot of variation. We got a lot of wiggle room under M1.
And I think that's the reason behind, is that we wanted to be able to give our planning people, that committee sets autonomously from this council. We don't go in and tell them how it's gonna go. They're volunteers from the community that come in and have certain expertise in areas. And then we ask those people to make good decisions based on the rule and law of the city. And that's what we did in this case, and they've passed it forward in an affirmative position to say that they believe that this is going to fit the bill for that piece of property and not be intrusive anymore than building buildings is already, you know?
No more than.
Than it already, yeah.
All right, that's basically what, but I know when all this comes in there, you know, you'll fall back to the drainage in that. It may be that my house is the only one that is actually affecting right now, but any little rain we get, I've got a lake out there because they've got the pipe.
The pipe's pulled up, yeah.
It's all stocked up.
Well, and that is, of course, our water department, and I don't get to go out and necessarily check their work either. We do, this body, we appoint those people, but it's, again, we appoint them for them to be able to go out and do their own work. You understand what I mean?
Yeah, I wouldn't even, yeah, I wouldn't even have brought this up, but I've called twice already, said, you know, kinda clean the ditch out, you know, where the water can flow on through. And I think it's just trickling down. It's not getting to the guy that actually does it.
Okay.
But yeah, Joe, that's, I'm just not really happy with the M1, but I've let you know that so far.
That's right. Well, and I just want you to know that we're a watchdog for that. Quite honestly, we're not here to pull one over on you, or I wouldn't have given this much time to it, quite honestly. I think this is good conversation, and it allows for people to go out and say, now I understand. I may not like it, but now I understand what they were trying to do.
That's it. Well, I talked to you forever, because this is a good way to do it.
Now, I still look good. Hey, he nodded his head yes, that I do look good, so. We appreciate you, Mr. Handy. Is there anyone else that I'd like to speak against? Yes, sir. Can you? If you could. That's just so that we can get in on our official record. Just take the time. You're good.
My name's Bart Furman. I live on 3503 Greenview Avenue.
Your first name again?
Bart.
Bart.
I've been fortunate. I've lived there 35 years and it's, Rainbow City's thrived. Um, my property value has quadrupled in the last 35 years. That's my interest in this. I don't want my property value to dive. I, I have no problem with the storage building.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the manufacturing, I'm, I'm like him. I just want to know more about it.
Yeah.
What's going to go there and drop. I don't want my value to drop. And it could very well do that.
Yeah. Well, I'm gonna help you there. Your property ain't gonna drop in this city for a long, long time. And it, and it's just because there's a lo-, there's a lot of diligence going into making sure that we don't, uh, misuse property that, that we already know is quite valuable and is continuing to grow in value. And, uh, and I promise you, that, that's our job is to make sure that we don't, we don't degrade any portion of your quality of life or quality of place.
I appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
My name's Jane Handy. I'm Robert Swad.
Well, he's a winner on this deal.
Next door, but, okay, it's a, you say it's gonna be office buildings?
The front two.
The front two.
Yes, ma'am.
And on the back, it's already designated for
Storage.
Stor-, okay. So office in the front, storage in the back. So there's just gonna be like office work from like eight to five?
I would guess.
Something like that? Okay. Well, talking about the storage buildings across the street, uh, and I, I get it that people come and go and move in their stuff. There's not a problem like that, but other things go on there, too. Like, somebody's working on vehicles there. I mean, no doubt. And I've actually called the police because they were there later than 10 o'clock at night and the engines, engines, I mean, you know, guys will get out there and just rev it up to see how loud it'd go, whatever, but they take no respect in their lights and how long they'll sit out there and rev their engines up and stuff like that. So that's going on there. So what's gonna happen if something other than work goes on at the office buildings and they're disturbing? Because that's gonna be right next door.
Yeah. Well, I th-, I think, I, I would have to say that I know if you go up the road just a little bit, there's the karate place that doesn't keep
Yeah.
Doesn't keep office hours. It, it, it has night classes and those kind of things. And, you know, that's, that is the, I, I guess, the kind of hairy in the biscuit kind of situation with zoning is that all zoning stops at one place and picks up at another. And, and in this case, that, that property, we feel like we did you a good turn by, by creating that highway commercial and, 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 and putting the developers in a position of putting office space on the front or, or whatever it's going to be
We appreciate that.
Utilized for. And, and I think that m- m- may help. You know, I, I don't know, but as far as like any kind of, uh, late night usage and those kind of things that are outside what a storage facility should be, I, I would suggest that you call our police department because that and also our, we, and, and our chief, he's here and he'll give you contact numbers personally to him. And also, he'll be able to put that, uh, before our revenue people because that's not what those facilities are for. That's not, I don't think what Mr. Cummings is, is, is building them for. And, and, but, but, but we also know there are bad actors in all great things.
Exactly. And, um, I have called and, um, the police actually came out and some word got back to them because they did start acting better.
Okay.
They, they're gone by 10 o'clock.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's, that's
Well, then that worked.
Yeah, it, yeah, it did. So somebody told them, but that's all well and good. But, yeah.
Well, and, and I think that's the way we, we make all of this better and make it where we can all kind of work, work together, even when we don't necessarily agree, uh, is that, you know, we're, we're not taking any of those things lightly. You know, we, we see everything as a, as a, a, a serious matter until it is deemed unserious, you know? And, and, and I believe that our, our job is to be diligent in protecting you, uh, protecting, uh, Mr. Furman, as well as protecting Mr. Cummings. And we try to do that by making sure that we stay on subject and, 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 and keep ourselves in a position to be able to protect as much as we possibly can. And for me, and, and I'll speak to Mr. Furman on this, uh, the value of this property matters to us as much as it could you. And, and that's because I own property in this city. We have to to be here. And, and because of that, uh, I don't want to see your property dip and I sure don't want to see mine. So if yours does, chances are either mine already has or mine's on its way. And, and we'll, we'll be, we'll be good stewards of, of, of that alone, if, if nothing else.
Um, I think one of my points were, I called the, I thought was the owner of the stocking lockets. I talked with someone. It was a lady. And told her the situation that was going on at night and stuff. And she said she would, uh, let it be known to whomever, but it wasn't. So that's when I had to call the police. But it, it was really, really disturbing. And to know that, I mean, I even requested a big sign to be put out there, please turn headlights off, you know, something to show a little respect.
Well, I, I believe I can say this about our chief, and that is when it comes to problems in our community that become annoyances, aggravations or trouble, uh, call early and call often. So, you know, I, and I, and I get trying to call and, and be reasonable with people, but you and I both know that if you get just the standard reception, if they may not have anything, they may be having a bad day. But I promise you, our police department, that's their job. Their job is to be diligent to your needs and, and that's what they'll continue to do as long as I'm here.
Okay.
And as long as this chief is here, for sure.
All right. Appreciate you.
Thank you. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else speak? Okay, yes, sir.
Takes me a while. I'm old.
I understand. Took me an hour to get down here.
My name is Jeff Biggs. I live at 3480 Greenview Avenue. Now I understand more about what the M1 involves. Is this not gonna be a widget manufacturing company sitting back there with machines running all night, which I think that is good. It's gonna be offices up front and then storage in the back. My concern, being a grandfather, got a two-year-old grandson, tons of kids in the neighborhood, how much more is that gonna increase the crack traffic on that highway? Because right now, it's worse than 759.
Mm-hmm.
There is so many cars that speed on that road and God forbid somebody hurt one of our children on our little neighborhood. Is that gonna be more policed, I guess I'd say?
Well, you know, we have, we have to say, and I, and, and I could let the chief speak to this, but I think I can do it for him. You know, any place that is heavily congested or heavily traveled is going to always have more of a heavy presence of the police department. Now, one of the reasons that y'all probably have had lesser over time was because that was more of a neighborhood.
Right.
And in that, we don't tend to roll into the neighborhoods because it can be seen as problematic for, for the people that live there. They don't, they don't want to always see the police. But we do make a presence. I mean, we've, we've just recently had some complaints down in my neck of the woods, down in Riddles Bend, where people said, we never see the police. Well, I'm just gonna tell you, you won't ride down there now without seeing them. And it's just because they feel a, a necessity to have more presence. And in that, it's a call early, call often. And this police chief, I know it as well as our, uh, chief over patrol, Scott Holderfield, they'll see too. You're neat. And they'll come out there and they'll run radar. I wish that we could set a police car on every fast road because I promise you, we'd write a million dollars worth of tickets on Brown Avenue.
In between my property and my neighbors was zoned for a road to go through.
Right.
Jeffrey Street.
Jeffrey, yes.
So that is still zoned that a cop could set there with radar
Right.
And watch those cars. Because one out of 20 maybe doing a speed limit. It's 25.
Yes, sir.
And lawn furniture is probably the worst one of all, with their little vans going down through there at 70 miles an hour.
Yeah.
I mean, I've had two dogs hitting that road, which of course the dogs ain't supposed to be out there. When they get out of the house, take off running.
I wasn't gonna bring that up.
If you're doing 70, you can't avoid it.
Right.
If you're doing 25, you can stop.
I got you.
But it's just, it scares me with how much more traffic is gonna be coming up there with if, even if it is two office buildings, you're talking 20 more cars a day
Sure.
Just to work in the office building. Plus people going in and out of the storage.
Right.
Because that is a major cut through. There's more traffic on our highway than there is on Black Creek Parkway.
Right.
Because it's always been used as a cut through road to save time.
Yes, sir.
So I just wonder if it was gonna be any more police activity down there.
I think you got a chance to say it straight to him in the back corner.
That's what I want to see.
Yes, sir.
Somebody with a radar gun there. Man, you can fill up this room with money if you come down there.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Well, thank you, sir. I appreciate you. Uh, anyone else that'd like to speak against? And it's really not been that bad. So I think it's just, uh, it's always good to be able to come here to, to get some answers, you know? And, and, and I don't see it as positive and negative necessarily. So, uh, Mr. Cummings, would you like to speak for? Anyone that wants to speak for, you can just let me know.
Well, I don't have much to say other than the property was zoned correctly for us to use it. And the city made the changes in the use of the zoning for the warehouses. So we have complied completely with the city and we have drawn a plan to satisfy the city. I, I think that's correct.
That's true.
And we put the buildings out front, the commercial buildings, and they'll have offices and it'll be a warehouse office situation. And we did that. They'll look great and it'll be paved parking. And so I think all I can say is we have complied 100%
Yeah.
With the city. And then they had to change the zone, they changed the use in the zoning to keep the, the influx of many warehouses down, which was their decision. And I think they've done all they could do to allow me to use my property.
Right.
And the alternative would be just for the city to buy it.
Right.
You know, so, and the city can't buy everybody's property.
That's true.
You know, so, anyway.
Well, I, and I will say this before you step away, just in case you want to answer back to it. You know, there, there are certain requirements. Those requirements go to the engineered drawing that he brings to that planning committee. When he brings a, if, if it said that it was gonna have a pink dollhouse and a blue, you know, warehouse behind it, that's what he has to build, is pink dollhouse and a blue warehouse behind it. And in this case, he has to bring us a planned, laid out with the building so that we can see them and make sure that we're doing everything that's in, according to the guidelines of our zoning and accord, and according to the knowledge of that board. And these are engineered drawings. We're not doing this on the back of a napkin. Uh, there's some, there's some money that's already put into this to make sure that it re, uh, meets a certain, uh, building requirement. It has to satisfy our, our fire marshal. It has to fire, satisfy our fire and police department. And then it has to satisfy the, the planning commission a- as well as this council before it ever gets outside of this building for him to even put a spade in the ground. And all of those things have been done.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Cummings, before you step away, one more quick question for the record. Do you have any plans to do any manufacturing at the site whatsoever?
No, not, not at all.
Okay, thank you.
And like you indicated, there are many things that can happen. And I made this comment to Joel. I said, you know, going to M1 now, you know, that's, people are not gonna like that. And he assured me that that's what they had to do to incorporate my building and that was the proper zoning for them to use. But, I mean, we're gonna have storage. We're not gonna have manufacturing.
Well, and that's it because it has to be specific use. And I think that's the, the key to talking about zoning is had he came, you know, come to us and said he was gonna set up a machine shop, uh, I, I promise you, we wouldn't be talk, we wouldn't be talking about the same thing. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I mean, it, it's, it's
I heard Mr. Cummings, you know?
Right. Yeah, it's all about that usage, you know? And, and, you know, and, and, and you have to understand that because of the liability of the city's position, we're always making sure that, you know, if anybody's gonna want to trick a group of people, they want to trick us. And, and Mr. Cummings has been building in this city for
Forty years.
That's a long time. That's, that's, that's two years older than me. But, uh, that's not true. But, but he's been building for 40 years into this city and has been a good part, a community partner of this city. And, and he can tell you from the first time that he built some storage units in this city to now, the set of rules that you comply with now are quite stringent to include, uh, things that will help you guys, which is, uh, cameras on, 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 on his driveways to know that if somebody, uh, is coming into that area that's not supposed to, you know, we, we know those things. And, and this place is locked up tight as a drum at night, which to answer to your question, sir, uh, gives you more patrol, uh, quite honestly. You know, we shake, we still shake doors here like Barney Five did back in Mayberry, and just to make sure that our businesses, we're not gonna shake your door, but we'll get the, we'll get the, the businesses in this city just to make sure that, that, uh, we don't have any unnecessary crime here. And that's what keeps our, our city so safe and, and puts us on the top of that list every year, is because we're looking out for his property as well as yours. And we're gonna continue to do that.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, uh, I would need a motion to introduce the ordinance.
So may I?
Anyone else? I'm sorry. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, need a motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, we take a roll call and include me.
Anita Bedwell?
Yes.
Randy Weiss?
Yes.
Jeff Prince?
Yes.
Jamison Jenkins?
Yes.
Clark Hopper?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes. Need a motion to adopt.
So may I?
Is there any discussion? Clerk, we take a roll call.
Did you?
And include me. It was Jeff.
Okay. Anita Bedwell?
Yes.
Randy Weiss?
Yes.
Jeff Prince?
Yes.
Jamison Jenkins?
Yes.
Clark Hopper?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes. Uh, number 13 is a donation request from Penn Wheels for Prevention. That's the James M. Barry Center for Children Incorporated. Uh, everybody knows, uh, how we feel about that and what would be the pleasure of the council.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we do a Penn Wheel Garden in the amount of $100.
Second.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 14 is sponsorship request for Talk Derby to me, uh, to benefit the Family Success Center Saturday, May 3rd, 2025 at Seraphim Grace in Wellington. And the levels are shown. And what would be the pleasure of the council?
Grandstand?
Uh,
Uh, would like to put that in form of a motion.
Uh, the grandstand.
For 650?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, we're down to public comments. Is anyone here that, that has a public comment? That would like to speak? What about any of our department heads that have anything? Uh, we'll go to our council, uh, reports and comments and we'll start with Ms. Bedwell.
I never get to be first. Thank you. Uh, I'm in the middle of the row. First of all, thank y'all for coming very much. Um, it is, it's just so important, our city's so important to each one of us. Where we live is important. And, and as we move along and our city grows, I guess these are growing pains that we each have and that we, um, that sometimes are not easily to understand, but at the same time, um, as we grow and move forward, we need to all work together and do what's best for each other, do our very best. Um, I'm proud of Rainbow City, but I'm just, again, so glad that y'all come and feel comfortable and want to voice your opinion about your home and where you live and your neighborhood. And, um, it is our responsibility as a city, a city council and, uh, our departmental, um, to take care of our city. And so if, um, some additional police, um, presence is required, then that's what we need to ask for. So, uh, I, um, just glad everyone's here and look forward to, uh, moving forward. We have the opportunity that Rainbow City offers for so much, um, for, as we've talked about, about growing and, um, so much for, which is so special to me, our children and sports and things that are growing and happening in our town. So, uh, I just, uh, want to, uh, say thank you for letting me be a part of it on this council, but that I'm glad to live here, and I know you are too, glad you came, thank you.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I would like to also echo Councilwoman Bedwell's remarks, it's great to see people come out, thank you guys so much for letting us know your thoughts and opinions, and, you know, it's a learning process for the community and for the council's continual growth, as the city continues to expand, these issues are gonna come up more and more, and that's a good thing that we do hear from everyone involved, and I look forward to continue to hear from you folks, and if we don't do what we're supposed to do, you let us know one way or another, and we'll do our best to fix that for you. Our new businesses and the transfer of license, welcome, glad to have you, I know you've been here a while, but glad to have your continued presence, and to our new first responders, the promotions, guys, I know you've earned it, and we really appreciate it, and we're so proud to be working with you guys, to our new police officers, welcome to the Rainbow City family, we hope it'll be a long and prosperous career for you. And once again, it's a pleasure to serve the citizens of Rainbow City, we've talked about it over and over again, the safest city in Alabama, and we're gonna keep it that way, and I know that our police, fire, and not just that, part of safety is streets and sanitation, you know, things of that nature as well, so thank you guys for everything, and that's all of our departments. I would also like to remind everybody that the Etowah County Soccer Tournament will be held this weekend at the mega sports, the Sportsplex in Rainbow City, right behind Rainbow Middle School, love to have you guys to come out, and I'll yield the remainder of my time, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Prince.
Thank you, Mayor. Mixing it up on us tonight.
I am, trying to.
Trying to catch us off guard. And I'm gonna say the same thing, really, honestly appreciate all of y'all coming out and voicing your opinions, because we are up here as a representative of you, and we want to know things that are on your mind and the city, people in our city. Everything that we do, I assure you, is with the intent to make your life better and ours, because we all are in this together in Rainbow City, and it is a great city, we say that every time, and I'm very proud to be a part of this council and moving this city forward. As Ms. Bedwell did say, there, a lot of times when you're moving forward, there are some growing pains that are associated with that that are unfortunate, you know, the storage building things, we did try to make that a lot, not harder for someone to put storage buildings, but to make it a better look for Rainbow City, and that was the intent behind that change in the ordinance, so I think when it's all said and done, you'll be okay and happy, no less happy than you are right now, I'll put it that way, and I get it. As far as the speeding on the road, I had personally talked to our chief not too long ago, just a couple weeks ago, and we know there are several spots in the city that people love to go up and down fast, and your road unfortunately is absolutely a cut-through road, that people will take advantage of that, so I'm sure you'll get a little extra attention from that. To, we will miss Tony Williams, proud for his new opportunity that he has, I know that's an exciting thing for him, and to our two new police officers, we're very glad that you're a part of our city now, you're a part of our family, not just our city. To our fire department, the two that were promoted, very well deserved, long time, you heard one, sixteen years, and I'm not sure how long Vinnie's been here, but he's been here quite a while too, so you're getting, you're all getting into a really good opportunity with first responders in Rainbow City, so congratulations to all of y'all. And I would like to congratulate Councilman Weiss on his appointment and thank him for what he does, he mentioned the county tournament at the sports complex, there's a lot of good things going on in that direction, and Randy has done an excellent job with that sports complex, so I want to thank him for that, and that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Mr. Hopper.
Well, first of all, I want to congratulate the Sanders young man, Ben, fortunate to have trained your father, he rode with me in the ride-along program, Brent did, when I was at the Gaston Police Department for the thirty years I was there, and I think the uniqueness is for me, is as my career ends this Friday after thirty-six years, we get to vote on someone's child that I helped train back in the day. And I want to thank y'all four for coming out, this is why, this is, I'm gonna take a minute right here and get on the soapbox, we have planning commission meeting, we have it tomorrow night, and it's always seems to me, the public who has issues, like y'all four, I would have loved for y'all to have been there in December when we had the meeting, you would have had everybody there to help answer your questions a lot better and quicker, obviously you saw me fumbling around here trying to find it till Beth told me, hey, it's section seventy, because we just rewrote the book. But I think when we do have planning, I always feel, because it's three-thirty in the afternoon, and we got a new board, sometimes things, people's feelings do seem to get lost in the shuffle because they're not able to attend, and I want to take this time, know what's going on in your community, and if you do have a complaint, like what y'all did tonight, you had two venues, you had this one naturally, but you could have went, came to the planning commission where you would have had our building people there, you would have had the whole board there to listen to your concerns, and then we would have had the attorney that the city provides for us, and so always try to remember that, I want everybody to try to remember that, all right, thank y'all.
Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Mayor, I want to start by saying congratulations to Officers Thomas and Sanders, welcome to Rainbow City, we're glad to have both of you, also want to say congratulations to our new lieutenants, Lieutenant DePree and Lieutenant Martin, congratulations to both of you, well deserved, and we're glad to have you at Rainbow City. I want to reiterate what's already been said, I want to say thank you to Jeff and Bart and Robert and Jane for coming, and I want to reiterate that y'all are welcome here anytime, and I hope that y'all know that, and I hope that y'all feel that way, and I do want to reiterate one point that the mayor already made, as somebody who works in law enforcement, with the concern about police presence and the increase of that, our police department is very, very, very active with the preservation of life and property, and with that being said, as someone who works in law enforcement, I can guarantee you that the presence of storage buildings is going to one hundred percent increase a police presence in your community, especially during the hours when you're asleep, when our police department is out and all hours of the night protecting us, so I just want to reassure you of that, and that's all I have, thank you, Mayor.
On Monday, March tenth, there'll be no council meeting due to the National League of Cities, the council meeting will be rescheduled for Monday, March seventeenth of twenty twenty-five. Thankful for all the new guys that are coming on our police department, you're really getting in at the right time, and I believe that wholeheartedly. Also thankful for our guys that are being promoted in the fire department as well. To Mr. Hamby, about that water line that's coming, or water and sewer line that's going to be a part of that county mega site project, I'm gonna discuss that with them about it holding water and make sure that, the end result of this thing should be that you're left with a better product, with a better situation, and I'll follow up with the water department tomorrow, it's kind of outside my control, but it's not outside the fact that we do make those appointments to that water board, that's not a threat, Anita. She's one of those board members, so I think she'll carry it for us too, so, but I just want you guys to know that, you know, our job up here is to try to keep you and make you whole as much as possible, and they say that a great negotiation, both parties leave lacking something, needing something more, and I think tonight, you know, just getting a chance to have the people from this community come in and state their grievance, and then, and put it on to us, put the burden on to us to explain to you why this is not necessarily good or bad, just to tell you where we stand as far as our law and ordinance and how we got there, that's our job, and you should hold us to that higher standard, and I appreciate it. And Robert, it's good to see you, I hadn't seen you in at least a hundred years, so, but we do appreciate you, I'm glad to know that you're in Rainbow City, and we're gonna continue to take care of you. The last thing that I would say, and because of the fact of us being able to have a good civil disagreement or argument or solution maybe even, through all of this, is that that's what these council members are for, you know, feel free to call your council member and ask them those questions, you know, call my office, I think I missed your call because I had flu, and quite honestly, I don't know that I've quite gotten over all of that yet, but I can tell you this, you know, it's our intent, if you don't get an answer, call one more time and let's get you an answer, and I promise you, that's what our intent to do, and with that, I'd entertain a motion that we adjourn. Thank you, guys, thank you for being here. What I need, son?